The mission of the Big Walnut Local Schools is to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I will call this meeting to order. We will have a moment of silence for personal reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Flag is over here and over there. That's Ohio.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Darren, would you take the roll call?
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Fuji? Mrs. Hicks? Nix, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mrs. Graciosi?
Here.
Ms. Ernst.
Do we need a motion to excuse the...
Item six. It would recommend that the board approve the meeting minutes from the November 17th meeting. Any questions? Discussion? Darren?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciosi? Ms. Ernst?
That will take us to item number seven, superintendent's report.
Thank you. As we close out the first semester on Wednesday, I want to thank our staff and our administrators for all of their hard work and effort so far this school year. This semester has been challenging for a variety of reasons, but I appreciate everyone working together to provide the best educational experience possible for our kids. This room was packed last night and was full of music. Many of our winter band, choir, and orchestra concerts have taken place. And again, it's so wonderful to see our kids perform and share their passions. I believe December 21st is the first official signing day for Division One college athletes. Once those become official, I will share at a future board meeting. But I did want to give a shout out to senior Emma Barnett. She received a soccer scholarship to Kent State University. And the reason I'm giving her a shout out now is I believe tomorrow is her last day as a student at Big Walnut. She is going to graduate early so that she can be an early enrollee at Kent State so that she can prepare this spring and give herself a shot at competing for some playing time. It's great that we provide opportunities like that for our kids. A very small percentage are going to take advantage of that, but there are some schools where that's not even an option. So again, congratulations to Emma and we wish her the best of luck. For two of my stated items on the agenda, I wanted to give a brief update on facilities. Since our last meeting, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Schwartz, Ms. Foreman and I met with the Facilities Ad Hoc Committee to discuss the future use of 105 Baughman. Ms. Foreman and I have also been meeting on an ongoing basis with different developers as well as representatives from the city and township as we plan for what is on the horizon in terms of future growth. Originally, 105 Baughman was slated to be opened in the 23-24 school year as an elementary school. As of right now, we still don't know if that's going to be the case. That building was in bad shape nine years ago and it's really not any better now. There are some significant improvements that need to be made to get that entire building ready to be used for students. So right now, we're looking at some different options and we're gathering information on costs of those different scenarios. We hope to have that information compiled in January and reconvene the ad hoc committee to discuss the next step. So stay tuned. Safety is the next item on the agenda on my report. Safety has been a topic, and rightfully so, that has been at the forefront of my radar. Tonight, you will see on the agenda two items that I believe will enhance the safety of our students and our staff. The first is the recommendation to approve the implementation of Raptor. This is a visitor management program that when a state-issued identification card is swiped, it will run a background check against a sex offender database instantly. And it will also alert our office staff if there are any custody issues. It will also print a visitor's badge that has the visitor's photo on it with information on when they arrived in the building. This will be a significant upgrade over our current sign-in sheet method for visitors to our schools. The other component of Raptor is it is an emergency management system. We will be able to conduct our drills, account for students. In a real-time emergency situation, we will be able to connect with emergency responders and send alerts based on location and stay updated in real time, whether that's from a Chromebook, a computer, or my iPhone. This will be funded from two different safety grants. The other item you will see on the agenda is for the purchase of TransFinder for our transportation department. Our current routing software is significantly outdated. I would say beyond flip phone outdated. If we're going to do something, I think we should do it right. This is a significant purchase in the first year because it includes the technology hardware. But this will allow us to create more efficient routes. With our limited drivers, this is a necessity in order to continue offering transportation at the level we currently do. Building principals and secretaries will be able to access information to be able to quickly find out a student's bus number, pickup location, and time. This information can be accessed from a computer or a phone. The buses will be equipped with GPS. Families will be able to have access to live information to their children's bus assignment. This will allow them to receive alerts if a bus is running behind schedule. It will also give us the ability, if we so choose, to allow parents to see if the bus is getting close, almost if you've ever ordered an Uber. Gone will be the days of wondering, "Did we miss the bus?", as well as standing outside at the stop in the cold and rain and snow for 10 minutes waiting for the bus. Each bus will have a screen for the driver to see turn-by-turn directions as well as alerts for upcoming stops. This is a much better method than having a substitute driver trying to look at a sheet of paper in the dark in the morning. The money for this purchase will come from our permanent improvement fund, should you approve it this evening. There were several things that we wanted to accomplish and improve in our district, and I believe these two purchases will lead to two significant improvements in those categories. And finally, this one is not on the agenda, but I feel like it needs to be addressed as much as I possibly can. I know many people in this community are frustrated and have questions, and I wish I could answer them all. But unfortunately, when dealing with personnel issues, some information is not public. While I cannot and am not speaking about any case in particular, I can share with you our process when we receive a complaint or allegation about a staff member. Anytime we receive an allegation about a staff member, we investigate it. If the allegation is of the nature where a student is potentially not safe, we remove that staff member from the building while our investigation takes place. That could last days or weeks. Getting it right is more important than getting it fast. Again, I am not speaking about a specific case, but in general, these situations tend to end in one of three ways. The allegation is unfounded and the staff member is reinstated in their position. The allegation is confirmed and we proceed with appropriate discipline, up to and including termination. And oftentimes, the employee chooses to resign. At any point in this process, an employee may choose to resign. I want to point out that if an employee resigns and we have credible information that they have committed a crime and/or violated the ethics of an Ohio educator, we still provide that information to the appropriate law enforcement agency and again, if applicable, provide that information to the Ohio Department of Education's Office of Professional Conduct. By no means is a resignation a get-out-of-jail-free card. At no point in my 11 years as an administrator have I ever made a deal with any employee such as resign and I won't turn this over. If an employee decides to resign, that is their choice. I have a responsibility to the kids and the community and my own ethics as an educator to report things that are reportable. That is the way I have conducted business and that is the way I will continue to conduct business as long as I am the superintendent at this or any other district. Mr. Crowe, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item eight, recognitions. And before we do the recognitions, I wanted to address, for those present or those that might be present in the future, our public participation. Policy requires that you sign up to speak when you arrive. So if anybody hasn't signed up and they want to speak, now would be the time to do it because it'll be closed. Under item eight, we've got Mallory Kish. You can walk up the ramp and around here. And your certificate will be handed up front.
Mallory. Congratulations. This is so exciting and it's a beautiful painting. And I'm going to let you turn it around and show everybody. It's amazing. It's very, very detailed. And of course, I love the ocean, so if you decide you want to sell it, let me know. For being named Art Student of the Month, the Big Walnut Local Schools hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community. So I'm going to hold that while you take the microphone and tell us a little bit about the motivation for this beautiful painting you made of the ocean.
Thank you. Okay, so we had an assignment to do a coral wreath, but I wanted to bring more life into it. I like, you know, when there's more detail and it's very lively, it brings more emotion. So I added the whale and all the colors and the sun rays going through the water.
Anything about it that was special to you?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. So it's beautiful. It's just beautiful. And are we taking these? Okay, you will talk to Ms. Foreman and she's going to tell you about letting the board office have it on display for a while. And thank you and congratulations.
Okay, so next I'm going to have the FFA floriculture team come up. Okay, so I have the FFA floriculture team here. I'm going to read a little bit about what y'all did and then you can, you know, maybe tell us a few things about it. But the floriculture team participated nationally for the first time in our school's history. Traditionally, Ohio teams are in the lowest level rank in this event. This year's team decided to make their goal to attain the highest rank, gold. After all the scores were totaled, our team earned that gold rating by placing seventh overall out of 45 state-winning teams. The team was at a massive disadvantage going into this event. Nearly all schools competing are horticulture programs and we do not offer a single horticulture class for students. All of their knowledge was gained on their own time outside of the classroom. So I would love to hear how you guys, you know, got motivated to do this and figured out where to learn stuff and manage to achieve this goal.
I think a lot of it was definitely our determination as a group. To speak for myself, I don't really naturally have a green thumb. And so it was about learning a lot of different experiences. And I think like Mr. Stimmel, our advisor, really pulled a lot of resources together and went like above and beyond to help us, learn different techniques to help us succeed. I think we're just really motivated to succeed, yeah.
We're not going to lie, we love winning and we love bringing home titles. So we will put the hard work in to bring something home for our home FFA chapter here.
I also think kind of what Maddie said, just about the dedication. I know we all had our personal struggles, like I'm not the greatest at math. But we got through that and we also had like a teamwork activity. So I think it was a lot about just the bond that we created through that and all that kind of stuff.
I'm not going to lie, I'm going to go with what Sophie said. Winning, especially as an Ohio team with zero floriculture or horticulture, like, knowledge, the looks on everyone's faces when we won was priceless. So that's it.
So has this motivated any of you to consider horticulture in the future? Or maybe even just as like a personal hobby?
As a hobby.
Yeah. Excellent, excellent. Well, for being a member of the FFA floriculture team, earning a gold rating at the National FFA Convention and personally earning a silver rating, the Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects giant credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community. So this is for Lilly Capiti. And then for Maddie, Maddie Jones. Maddie Jones, Jordan Lowkey, and Sophie Marvin each received gold ratings. So for being a member of the FFA floriculture team, earning a gold rating at the National FFA Convention and personally earning a gold rating, the Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the Big Walnut community. So congratulations to all of you. Yes, congratulations.
The FFA food and science team come down. The food and science team also faced competition from 38 state-winning teams. This was a very young group and was entirely new from last year. The team placed second overall, also earning a gold rating. This team also broke a record. The event includes a team product development component in which students were asked to design a vegan noodle meal with a target market for millennials and Gen Z. The team earned a 399 out of 400, the highest score any team has ever earned in the event in its 25-year history. Kudos. For being a member of the FFA food science team placing second at the National FFA Convention and personally earning a silver rating, the Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire community, Olivia Jenkins. For being a member of the FFA food science team placing second at the National FFA Convention and personally earning a silver rating, the Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community, Landon Sewell. For being a member of the FFA food science team placing second at the National FFA Convention and personally earning a gold rating, the Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community, Mallory Klein. And last but not least, for being a member of the FFA food science team and placing second at the National FFA Convention, she personally earned a gold rating, placed ninth overall, and received a scholarship for her achievement. The Big Walnut Local School District hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community, Haley McComas. Good job.
I'd like to recognize one more person. I see Mr. Stimmel here. Mr. Stimmel, will you please stand up? On behalf of all of us, we appreciate your efforts and everything you do for our kids and the opportunities you provide them. And I was only half joking about the statue we're going to build of you. So keep up the great work. We appreciate you.
And I believe we'll be seeing you in the near future, after last weekend, right? That'll take us to number nine, treasurer's report. Darren?
Folks, you have in your packet, the financials from November. Just want to make a few comments about them before I move on to a couple other topics. First of all, we spent a lot of time last month talking about the five-year forecast and how challenging it might be moving forward. I do want to point out a couple of things on our spending plan through November. First of all, our Personnel Services are not spending as were projected. We are under the FY estimate by $296,000, almost $300,000. And our employees' retirement insurance benefit fiscal year-to-date estimate is down $232,000. And that is directly related to, and this board's had a great deal of discussion about, our tenure staffing plan. And while it calls for certain staff to be added, Mr. McLean and Ms. Foreman have been very strategic in the hires that they've made since they've been here. And it has resulted in these projected savings year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date. And honestly, I'm not telling you that, you know, I think we're leaner now than we were. I'm not telling you that we don't have needs because we do. But I think that what I am trying to relay to you is that those folks that make employment recommendations... is that those folks that make employment recommendations to you are doing their due diligence and making sure that those personnel are truly needed. The other thing that I will speak to on the other side of the coin is that our purchase services and our supply line items are up over what was the fiscal year-to-date estimate. I, to be very candid about it, I have to dig into that further to see where those expenditures are coming from. But those are two expenditure line items that are most out of what, most out of whack, to be technical, with regard to what was estimated, okay? And as that relates to what we're going to ask you to do later in the agenda by adopting an updated appropriations measure, that appropriations measure will take into account two things. First of all, the five-year forecast that you approved last month, so that that, those appropriations will reflect what was in your five-year forecast from November. And the second thing is those line items which are exceeding what was appropriated, which are supplies and purchase services. So those are the two biggest changes in that document. The other thing that I would be remiss if I didn't bring up is that we have just completed our state audit, our annual audit. While it is not public yet, it will be within 30 days. But I wanted to just briefly relay what was in the audit. And honestly, folks, if you haven't figured out by now, I'm gonna be brutally honest about the things. There were two things that were noted. We had no findings, no management letter, no non-compliance things. But the two things that were noted were that, and if I can take you back to a time when we were in the middle of COVID, school districts throughout Ohio received federal allocations, we call them ESAR, and they came in three rounds. The first two rounds came back-to-back and they hit all at once. And so one of the, one of the things that was noted in our audit was that we spent, not inappropriately, but we spent some money out of one ESAR account that should've came out of another ESAR account. And we have fixed that with regarding, regard to our accounting measures. But that's one thing that came out of that. The other thing was, and I think this is quite candidly a symptom of perhaps a larger issue, and that is that we had some outstanding POs that were left open from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. So that goes back two years. And this relates quite honestly to another issue that's on your agenda tonight. The then-and-now certificates that I'm asking you to approve. I want the board to understand that one of the things that I tried to establish in my goals that came back to you and that we are working on currently is tightening up the budgetary process to make sure that what was budgeted is what is spent. And if someone goes outside of the budgetary process to make a purchase, that they're held accountable for that and just tighten that whole piece up. We've had some meetings already. Your administrative team is on board with this. I've met with all of our supervisors, including Mr. McLean and Ms. Foreman. And we're moving to rectify this situation. And it's going to be, become increasingly important as we move on through our fiscal years to come. Because as I noted in our five-year forecast last year, or last month, we're going to have to begin some long-range planning with regard to our financial situation. So both of those items are reflected in some action items that we're requesting you take action on during this meeting. I have some other stuff that are, that's not in final form that Mr. Fuji had requested. And in his absence, I would prefer that I finish those, put them in a report form for all of you and share them. I'm not trying to not tell you something, I just think it's, the results I had were preliminary anyway. And if any of you have questions on me, I'll be happy to answer them. But those conclude my remarks.
Do you have an update on the FOIA requests?
The what, I'm sorry?
FOIA requests, time spent on?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Honestly, this has been, well, knock on wood. This has been a pretty good month. Up until a week ago, I could report that I had no records requests. Since then, I've had two come in. I'm still working on those because quite candidly, they've come in in the last 24 hours. Neither one of those, I think, is going to be too burdensome. So I don't anticipate it being a, you know, huge amount of time. We have one outstanding request that, again, it's the same request that involves several thousands of emails. And quite honestly, we are working as we speak to go through that email. We have an electronic program that works on making sure that, it eliminates multiple emails that may be repeated throughout the file. And so we're getting that under control. And then we're moving toward anything that is sensitive, that needs to be redacted. But now, next week honestly is a short week, but I anticipate having that done by the first of the year. And that's the only outstanding one we have, I believe. As I sit here today, I believe.
Moving on to item 10, Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. First of which is the RFP for Legal Services. I did find a template that we can use from a school district that has almost the same enrollment numbers. And haven't had the time to go through it, make the notations changes. But we'll be working on that. Mr. Ryan took most of my thunder on the Facilities Ad-Hoc. That's fine. Under the Policies Ad-Hoc, we did meet with Neola. We made it through. There are the original packet, which was the board members' items that they wanted to review. Then we had the August of '21, the February of '22, the August of '22. And we're expecting one in January or February. We made it through the board members' packet. And about halfway through the August of '21 packet, I'm envisioning that that will take, should take no more than two more meetings with Neola. And then we'll bring the whole reviewed policies to the board. I believe she said sometime in April or May, wasn't it? Yeah, for those.
Finish up what we had done with the first round. And then we'll start going through numerically through the zeros, the zero thousands, and then just start chipping away. But we were gonna address all the, all ours and then start again at zeros. But that should.
But I thought she said April or May, we should be able to.
Yeah, we, I think we just thought two or, two or three more sessions. It was very, she facilitated it very well, it was a good meeting. And we got through a lot of, I mean, just to go through the process, now we'll be faster.
And the last ad hoc committee is the Treasurers, which will meet sometime after organizational, or somebody will. And go from there on that, whether we keep the superb person we have or check for others. That takes us to number 11, which is Selected Board Policies. We have deferred 1617, 3217, 4217, and 7217. We did not address those in the meeting with Neola. We do have the results from the survey. And copies for all board members. We'll be reviewing the survey along with the survey taken at the meeting we had here. All of that combined. And under 11-1, it is recommended the board adopt the following revised new policies, second reading. 2280, Preschool Program, 5111, Eligibility of Resident, 5223, Release Time for Religious Instruction, which is new. 5460.01, Diploma Differral, 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act, which is revised. 7440, Facility Security, 7440.03, Small Unmanned Aircraft Systems, 8210, School Calendar, 8330, Student Records, and 8600, Transportation. I believe, Alice, originally you had a question on 8600. Actually, wait a minute. Do I have a motion? Do we need a motion? Darren, do we need a motion?
Well, if you're gonna adopt them, yes.
This is just a second reading. Yeah, if it's just a second reading, we don't need any.
Pardon?
If it's just a second reading, we don't need a motion.
We'll take it as a second reading. I just wanted to make sure. Alice, your question with the transportation, that was answered in the last meeting, right?
Right, right.
And I just wanted to point out, 2280, we did have a change from the first reading. So we did make an amendment to that because originally we had shall-not transport and we changed it to shall. So that's the amendment to this policy.
And you had one.
Can I ask another question about 2280? In regard to tuition and fees, do we charge for peers?
We do charge for typical peers, yes.
Okay, and we don't need to include the tuition and fees part in the policy to do that? That's stricken currently?
Well, you can approve a fee schedule annually that's outside the policy. So it's not necessarily required to be in the policy, but you will be required at some point in time to approve a fee schedule for that program.
And I think historically, that's how it's been.
Okay.
The fees were separate from the policy.
Okay.
No other questions?
You had a question last month on why A and C were deleted as definitions. It's because of a change in law, so those two don't apply anymore. So that's why A and C were deleted?
Moving on to item 12 then.
The board had a second reading on those policies. So it will be in your minutes and.
Can we move just to accept the policies as is now?
Yeah.
I don't recall Steve questioning any of the policies.
5223, if we're gonna take a vote? I mean, I'm.
Which one?
Are you, are you wanting to move forward and vote on these to?
You wanna discuss 5223?
No, I'm saying if we're gonna take a vote, I would move to separate 5223 from the rest.
Why would we? For further discussion or?
If we wanna vote differently on different policies.
Oh, you mean pull it out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine. You're gonna make me read all the policies. Actually, I'll do it in reverse. All the policies listed, with the exception of 5223, I would make a motion to accept them as written.
So moved. Second?
Darren?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
And I would make a motion on 5223 to accept it as written?
Second?
Discussion? Or just a? Go ahead, Darren.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh or Mrs. Dorsh?
No.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Abstain.
Takes us to item 12, Board Members' Items of Interest. Alice, would you, you wanna start over here?
I do have item of interest to make.
What did I miss?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, he looked at me, Sophie, so it's your play.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So in December, we held our second-ever Inspire Day. And so that was very exciting. For those of you who are unaware what Inspire Day is, it is basically a day where we had two free periods for students and they were able to travel to various teachers and they had a fun activity for the day. It was really nice opportunity to kind of de-stress before our upcoming exams. And so students were able to attend various activities, including the very popular How to Cook a Steak, Ping Pong, book trading, watching Christmas movies. I know they even learned how to French press coffee and many more activities. And I think students were very pleased. Also, Student Council, we went and got Krispy Kreme Donuts and we stole them, sold them to students at lunch. And we ran out before the end of sixth-period lunch. And luckily, we had a student run out to yummy donuts and they very graciously donated the rest of their donuts in the shop for us to sell. And so that will go towards some charitable causes that Student Council will look into. And on Tuesday, we had students take the ASVAB test. And yesterday, during Eagle Time, students had the opportunity to hear from a civil engineer through our future, like, students can basically learn from different professions and see what they would like to do in the future. So we have speakers coming and talk to us sometimes. Last night, the BWHS Music Department had their holiday concert and I heard it went very well. This week, Big Walnut CCP students have been taking their final and midterm exams. So best of luck to them. And also, best of luck to our high school students as they take their midterm and final exams next week. Congratulations to the swim team replacing first at their December 4th Invitational. Also, on December 4th, the girls' varsity basketball team beat Delaware Hays 81 to 35. They play at Worthington Kilborn tomorrow at 7:30. Additionally, the wrestling team placed fifth at their home meet this past Saturday. And good luck to them as they take on Delaware tonight in our gymnasium. The varsity basketball team won against Elgin on Tuesday night, 65 to 50. They play Worthington Kilborn tomorrow at home at 7:30. Tuesday, the bowling team set a new record for the school by beating Kilborn 2,452 points to 1,649 points. So congratulations to that team as well. The Big Walnut Eagle Connections, formerly known as Best Buy. The Big Walnut Eagle Connections, formerly known as Best Buddies, they held their Christmas party last week, and at the party, they had pizza, and made ornaments, and made art with paint and snowflakes, and it was very fun. Our Spanish and German club also had their Christmas parties. Also, congratulations to our FFA program again. They competed at the Ohio State University recently and placed first at the Food Science and Technology Career Development Event. So congratulations to the FFA program and to Mr. Stimmel. The Spirit Shop dropped a new holiday T-shirt on Monday featuring our favorite principals, and that is for sale currently. The NHS and Leo Club both adopted families for the holidays, and it's really great to see students giving back to people in our community. The NHS also began a recycling initiative, and we have begun collecting paper products from the first-floor gray pod and hope to expand to more classrooms soon. The Leo Club has been selling candy cane grams and is currently hosting a used coat drive. The Key Club is going to be hosting a hot hygiene product drive when we return back from break, and the Drama Department is currently hosting auditions for their spring musical Matilda. As for the winter homecoming game, the winter homecoming ballot has gone out, and we are very excited for the upcoming game. The game will be next Thursday, home at 7:30 against Marion Harding. The ceremony, which we crowned the king and queen, will take place between the JV and varsity basketball games. This year, we will not have a winter homecoming game due to the holidays and people being out of town, but we will be having a winter formal on January 21st, and more details about that will be coming. And I hope everyone has a safe and well-deserved winter break, and so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Angela?
Short and sweet, I'd like to wish all the staff, students, a wonderful holiday vacation, Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Please take some time to slow down and enjoy the holidays. And as the seniors are wrapping up, you know, starting their last half of their last year, take time, reconnect with your friends, make the most of it, savor every day, and it'll be gone before you know it, and you'll be, I wish, looking for the high school days, so that's it.
Jerry?
I was just going to mention a couple of things. As one of our legislative liaisons, I think the House and the Ohio House and Senate just wrapped up today. There were some changes made, but the HB 178, which was looking to reform the Ohio Department of Education, was actually amended in the House, and that did not pass, so that will be taken up in the General Assembly in early January again. So in addition to that, just kind of keeping an eye on all of that stuff as it results in changes to curriculum and requirements with athletics facilities and safety and everything. I think sometimes we all forget that that takes a lot of time for our staff and admin to keep up with all of those things. I know the Dyslexia Guidebook, I believe, came out recently, which Mr. Lynn Scott spoke about at one of our recent board meetings. So hopefully, our team is being able to dig into that. I know a lot of time goes into those types of activities and that preparation and training as well. I just want to express thanks to all of our staff and our admin team. There's definitely a lot going on in the district, definitely a lot of things that we need to keep an eye on for the future. We know there's a lot of potential growth in the community with developments in the area, keeping an eye on safety facilities, improving our capital assets, like we talked about with the buildings and different things, keeping up with pandemic learning losses, working to improve our offerings to students, and working on how we can improve working conditions for our staff, too. So thank you all to everyone who plays such a big role in this district to, you know, keep everything moving forward. We have a lot of work to do, and I am very appreciative of the work the administration has done on safety recently. I know that takes a lot of time, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to working on all of these things into next year.
Alice?
Yes, good evening. I would like to share with you something to think about as this meeting progresses tonight. Trust, which is the most expensive thing in the world. It can take years to earn and just a matter of seconds to lose. We are told to trust certain people without really knowing them, and try as we might, something is said or done to cause that trust to fade. At our last board meeting, Mrs. Dorsh spoke to the issue of hate she seems to be aware of and how it must stop. I don't disagree with that, but there are many layers to that observation, and those layers are built on trust. Character matters when it comes to Big Walnut staff. We claim to guide and inspire our students, which would be a means of building character. That effort is not a single responsibility of staff and administration, but it is a team effort, which includes parents, teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, food service personnel, counselors, members of the board, and community members. It is important that the members of the team have a clear understanding of the boundaries and the rules for inspiring and guiding. I will close with this reminder. The road to hell is paved with good intentions. Big Walnut does not want to travel that road. And with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and thank the staff for all their endeavors with our students. It was obvious tonight, we have some very successful students that are doing quite well. So thank you.
And for me, I would just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all the students and staff of the school district. I keep it short always. Item 13, Public Participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public-community meeting. This is a time for the public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. It is. And how many do we have? Seventeen?
Twenty. We have twenty now.
When did the other three come in?
Well, they came in following your remarks about
Within minutes?
Yeah.
We allot 30 minutes for public participation. So we will start public participation. If you can keep it short, keep it short. We'll take a vote of this board to extend it beyond that. Go ahead, Darren.
First, we have LeAnn Carr.
Can you hear me now? All right. Good evening. I'm here because I'm the parent of a Big Walnut graduate, another that's a junior, and a third that will start school in two years. With me, you are getting a visit from the ghost of Big Walnut parents past, present, and future. At all of the school board meetings, I hear time and again about how we're here for our children, both sides of every debate. The problem is, you're not supposed to be here just for your children. You need to be here for everybody's children. Your child may not need to read a book about sexual assault or about not feeling comfortable in their own skin, or that when an adult does something wrong, it's not in any way the kid's fault. But somebody else's child might need that book, might need that reassurance that they are not alone, that someone else has felt the same way and survived. Sure, they could go to a library outside of school and find that, but don't we want to give them every opportunity to find the help they need? Do you want to put any roadblock in the way to be able to find the material that might save their life? When talking to my children, I lay out my rules and expectations for them. I trust that they will follow them until they give me a reason not to trust them. Every book in the library has a synopsis on the back or inside cover. Every child who goes to pick one out can read that synopsis and decide if that's something they would care to read. They have a choice. They they have a choice. What reason have they given us not to trust that choice? They wouldn't pick the book or even keep reading it if they weren't finding some value in it, value that not everyone might understand. Reading is one of my favorite things to do. I've taken part in many reading groups, and never once have I heard anyone say they've lost any innocence from a book. What I do hear is how they've gained knowledge, understanding, and empathy. Knowledge is power. Knowing about the bad stuff in the world teaches us how to be the good stuff. It tells us not to go down destructive paths, to learn from the character's mistakes, to make better choices, and when we do make a mistake, which inevitably we all will, some of those books will show how characters still manage to fight back and not let their mistakes define them, how they survived. Kids are exposed to these words and content and question in a myriad of other places. If you've ever played an online video game or chaperoned a field trip, you know what I mean. Now, how do I know a book can save your life? In both my youth and still now, I've had books fall into my hands at just the right moment, just when I needed them, they gave me hope, strength, and saved me from despair, but only because I was allowed access to them. I hope everyone has a happy holiday.
Cecilia Carr?
So I can see it. Or turn your tablet so I can see it. That's good.
There we go. Hi, my name is Celia Carr, and I'm a junior here at the high school. Tonight, I'm going to be reading a speech written by my friend Isabel Carr concerning the potential book bannings. She couldn't be here tonight, but I agreed to read this speech because I feel it represents the opinions of many of my classmates about what happens in our classrooms. I apologize that I am not able to be here in person today. My whole life, I have been told countless times that I am the mature one or that I'm wise beyond my years, or that I'm just an old soul. I was told this yet again over the weekend by the same people who say they want me to enjoy my childhood, and the same people think that I won't be able to enjoy my childhood if I have to deal with the burdens that some of my favorite works of literature have given to me. Let me tell you about these burdens. I learned the importance of an emotional connection. I learned to never give up on yourself and your own ideas. I learned to see the world from all different perspectives. I learned that sometimes things can have hidden meanings. I learned the meaning of true relationship and how to communicate effectively. This list could go on and on. I learned that these books will have more of an impact on my life, more than I ever could have fathomed. I have never frowned upon a moral a book has taught me, only the homework I'm assigned afterward. I will always carry the knowledge they have provided. So let's talk about maturity. Let's talk about my and our adolescence. When we think about the definitions of these words, you probably don't link the two in your mind, but I do. When I think about it, I know I can have both. I know I will continue to educate myself, but without these books in schools, we have to trust the kids who don't get to experience them within a classroom to do that themselves. Trust your children, trust our teachers, and most of all, trust the impact a single book can have on someone's life, because I can tell you right now, we do. Thank you.
Taylor Thompson?
Good evening, Big Walnut School Board. My name is Taylor Thompson, and I am an AP Literature student. I've been taking Honors in English classes for many years now. I've read many books, including Looking for Alaska, Brave New World, and Beloved. These are among the novels that are currently requested to be banned. Not only have these titles specifically taught me about the harsh realities of the world, but these titles have specifically taught me how to analyze and understand literature. I've never felt uncomfortable in class during discussions, and rather, I found them helpful in navigating some of the tougher scenes in books and in life. My mother is an avid reader, as am I. While reading Looking for Alaska in class, I asked her to read the book alongside me so that we could bring our worldviews and perspective into interpretation of the book, allowing us to better understand each other and the book itself. Interpreting the book is not just between me and my mother, it is a collective effort. I have found that my teachers also provide the support and never pressure a student to talk unless they choose to. They have allowed me to understand the importance of these books and to apply the themes in my everyday life. They have shaped me into the well-rounded person I am today and encouraged me to attend events such as peaceful protests. Merriam-Webster defines pornography as "the depiction of erotic behavior intended to cause sexual excitement." The scenes in the books intended to be banned have been described as pornographic. However, being a student who has read a few of these titles, I have found that they were not used for sexual appeal, but to make and justify a theme. Being a 17-year-old female who has been sexually harassed in the past, these book titles have allowed me to understand my situation and find comfort in knowing I am not alone. Reading these books in a school environment was specifically helpful to me as a student, citizen, and overall person. I ask that you hear me and all of my students, including Isabel Carr, and keep these books in our school. Thank you for your time, and have a happy holidays.
Elaine Miller?
Good evening. Throughout the book-challenged discourse, I've noticed a lack of accurate discussion about one detail of this specific group of challenged books, and that is a result of much of the scrutiny looking at sexual content deemed explicit under the guise of protecting kids by individuals without expertise to appraise them as such. This topic is one that requires much more nuance and tact than three minutes will allow, so I apologize for any lack of clarity or gentleness on the topic. For context, while I am speaking as a parent of three children in this district, it would be unrealistic not to acknowledge that my profession impacts the way I parent and the way that I exist in this community. I've been fortunate to be trained by and work with professionals in sexual violence prevention and advocacy, and these topics are difficult, which I suspect is responsible for the lack of commentary. But it's vital that we understand where the actual dangers lie. Experts in child sexual abuse prevention, ranging from detectives to pediatricians, show us that teaching our children correct names of body parts and what sex is are the biggest protective factors against child sexual abuse. This starts at a young age, not by teaching about sex, but about boundaries and consent, teaching them to say no, respecting others' no's, and that it's okay to tell anyone not to touch you, even if they're an adult. And as they age, they learn about how their own and others' bodies work, and if they don't learn this from a trusted source, they are at a higher risk of being a victim of grooming and sexual abuse. And as much as it can hurt to acknowledge, we as parents are not always going to be their most trusted adult. So it's crucial to their safety that they have access to a variety of resources. And how does this relate to ban books? When we're in a district that lacks a consistent sex education and violence prevention programming, our kids are already vulnerable, but now we are taking it a step farther and trying to to ban books that recognize dangerous behaviors that may offer them a modicum of safety should they find themselves needing to navigate an abusive relationship, or what to do in the horrific event that an assault or another abuse happens. Reading these books in a safe environment surrounded by professionals trained to process what they learned alongside them is an ideal situation. There's an insistence that all sexual content is dangerous, and this causes a disregard of the access our kids already have to actual harmful content. Removing safe resources when experts have shown us their value in protecting our children is dangerous. Kids' awareness of their bodies, of sex, of assault, of abuse is pertinent to their safety. When sex ed and stories about social scenarios that happen in real life is restricted, our kids will always be less safe. They will be less prepared when faced with situations that are truly harmful and have no one to guide them. Thank you.
A group of concerned parents have circulated a petition to help raise awareness in the community about books found in Big Walnut classrooms and libraries. These books contain adult content. They are inappropriate for children, they are sexually explicit, a good number of them are pornographic. To date, four hundred and forty-six signatures have been collected. The petition signed by the concerned, tax-paying, Big Walnut community members reads as follows: "To date, we have discovered more than thirty-five sexually explicit books and graphic novels in the Big Walnut local school district, in the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high schools' curriculum, classrooms, and libraries. Topics include sex, gay sex, oral sex, group sex, drunken/drugged sex, pedophilia—I cannot say it—pedophilia, child pornography, incest rape, gang rape, prostitution, and sadomasochism. If you believe books with these sexually explicit topics should not be available to students within the Big Walnut local school district, please sign this petition in support of requesting their removal." The concerned parents were prepared to present the board with these signed petitions. However, due to threats received by a community member, the concerned parents have decided not to turn in these petitions. We wanted to protect those that have signed. When the concerned parents organized this for the community awareness, they never imagined that those who signed would be harassed, targeted, or harmed for signing. In order to protect these citizens, we will not be turning these in. If any board member would like to—has any questions or would like any questions answered about these petitions, they can reach out. For your reference, if you guys would like, I do have a copy of the blank petition for each of you to take a look at. The group of concerned parents respectfully asks that you consider this large number of tax-paying community members who do not support this type of adult content being assigned and accessible to our impressionable children in our schools. Thank you very much for your time and have a Merry Christmas.
First, I want to say, I hear over and over from people, "We as parents are so naive. The kids have access to everything on their laptops, phones, TVs, internet." Well, that's just a cop-out as a parent trying to make it okay. Many parents try their hardest to block access to all that junk. There are plenty of apps out there that parents use to monitor or block their kids' activities. I try my hardest to teach my kids how to deal with situations and keep it age-appropriate, not cloud their minds with false truths. Do I think my child is and will always be perfect? Absolutely not, but it's the way they respond after they make a bad choice. I teach them right and wrong, not that what's right is wrong and what's wrong is right, because that's where we are headed in our society. I will keep my children protected from the real world for as long as possible because they deserve to be children, enjoy their childhood, and not have to carry the weight of the world on their shoulders. They aren't meant to deal with adult situations. It's added stress to them and their brains can't process it the same as adults. Why does the school need to be one more mode of access for these kids? Why do we need sexually explicit books on their curriculum and in the school library? Look up and read the book Lucky, then tell me what the educational purpose of that book. The rape scene made my stomach turn. It is not to help them cope. Have you ever thought about how these kids may respond to these rape scenes, the ones who have never reported their sexual assaults? This could be a trigger for them. Many of these books do not belong in the school library. They need to be moved to the public library, and for the ones less graphic, they need to have a rating system or something put on them. Parents don't know what our kids are checking out, and if there is a rating system, at least, we can restrict what they read or what they check out. We need to come up with something. I know books are not a part—or only a part of—the problem, but we need to start somewhere. I am a parent who loves and will fight for my children. I won't back down from the things I believe should not be in our schools, and that is my right as a parent to do so. My kids are just as important as any other and shouldn't be discredited because of others don't agree with how I feel. And then, one thing to say about what—books that are checked out in the library don't have a safe environment for those kids to necessarily read, and at least within the classroom, they have—teachers do have that, but not all the books in the library. You can't have a safe environment for them, and some of them do not belong in there. Thank you.
Good evening. I wish to express my strongest support for the well-trained, talented, and trusted educators who teach our students at Big Walnut. I hope you will continue to trust their good judgment and experience to guide your decisions to keep the curriculum materials that they're using in the classrooms. When a small vocal group of parents are able to dictate what and how any subject is taught, our whole society loses some diversity and freedom. Any book that is pulled from the curriculum is no longer able to be studied, discussed, and evaluated on its entire full literary merit. The book may be sought out simply because it has been removed from the classroom. Passages will be taken out of context, text, and blown up as more of an issue than when it is part of the whole literary work. Difficult, uncomfortable readings that are outside one's comfort zone may be very disturbing and unsettling. They may also be very valuable in shaping strong ideas and ideals that serve us throughout life. My girls, who are top students at Big Walnut, they also feel that the opportunity to read, evaluate, and discuss these books with the guidance of talented teachers helps shape their world, their worldviews as being highly-involved citizens today. Please let good reason, strong commitment to your processes, and thoughtful communication continue to guide your decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to start with a quote. "It is almost impossible to maintain a self-centered or entitled point of view if we are consistently being challenged by ideas and experiences, literary or real world, which encourage us to look beyond ourselves." The last time I was in this room was to talk about arming staff in Big Walnut schools, something that staff are not trained for. Well, twenty hours of training. Now, here we are talking about banning books that trained teachers have chosen, something they have actually spent way more than twenty hours being trained to do. The school board is supposed to be non-political, yet we have school board members running political campaigns, school board money members running on campaign money from a political pact. It feels as if we are having trouble separating politics from educating students. Banning books is political. Members of this board ran on a parents' rights platform, yet here we are to see if you are going to take away parents' rights by removing books, because some people, all of which have kids in our district, do not like the books. No one is forcing kids to check out books. Books that are being read in classes have an option to opt out of the book, giving parents choice. Eliminating these books takes away choice from parents. We should be giving our students experience through literature. We should have books available for all students. It is your job to enrich the lives of all students and not force your beliefs onto others. Some things we learn from difficult books. We learn empathy, we learn gratitude, we learn perspective, we learn to nurture prayerful contentment, and we learn to temper our complaints when we see how much better our lives can be than others through literature. I'd also like to end with a quote. "No matter our age, we can gain a helping hand from stories like these." We don't have to read only challenging books, of course, but we shouldn't be afraid of them. We shouldn't fear exposing our children to a bit of tempered, age-appropriate suffering via the written page, widening our awareness of the world and opening our eyes to problems far larger than our own. Thank you.
My name is Terry Yates. I'm a taxpaying resident of the Big Walnut School District. Both of my children graduated from Big Walnut schools. I would like to thank the administration for working so hard to inspire and guide our students so that they can reach their maximum potential. By providing a quality education to our students, this school district teaches our students to think and to understand that there can be different solutions to the same problem. These are critically important life skills for everyone. Successfully meeting such significant educational goals does not occur by pure lack or happenstance. Big Walnut Schools hires well-trained and educated professionals to serve as teachers, counselors, and administrators in our schools. In addition to solid credentials, Big Walnut is blessed to have educators who truly care about our students as individuals worthy of their best work. Big Walnut Schools has developed processes and procedures that support the effective implementation of these educational goals. Committees are developed and instructed to review and evaluate the building blocks of the educational system, including books. It is important to trust a thoughtfully-developed process. To do otherwise creates arbitrary and inconsistent results that harm the integrity of the entire educational system for our school district. This creates distrust and concern that short-sighted, illogical results will discourage our successful and well-rounded educational system. Please rely upon the well-intentioned and professionally-developed procedures that have been thoughtfully created and executed to achieve objective outcomes that are in the best interest of our students. To do otherwise insults our dedicated and well-trained educators and harms our students. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent McLean. I am a mother of a child in the district, and I wanted to start by thanking Mindy, a mom in our district, for obtaining the list of books that are in the Big Walnut library and for taking the time to research which books have sexually explicit content in them that are not appropriate for our minors. She's done the school and the community a huge service in bringing this to our awareness. I'm deeply disappointed that our school's book review committee has voted to keep Looking for Alaska as an assigned reading to our 10th grade Honors English class. It is outrageous to require fifteen-year-olds with raging hormones to read a book that contains three pages detailing the act of oral sex. On this list is a book called Sold. It has a five-point—five out of five worse rating than a book can get, its equivalent to an X-rated movie. It is a story about a child that's sold in prostitution, and it's page after page after page describing the sexual, physical, and mental abuse that a child is experiencing. I had a hard time reading this, so I don't understand why this is in the school library. Another book on the list is a book that is a graphic novel called Flamer. It is not only—it doesn't only make several, several—I'm sorry, several references to oral and anal sex, but it also provides sexual imagery along with it. How is that academic? This book, Beyond Magenta, might as well be entitled "The Pedophile's Tool for Grooming." I'm going to read an excerpt from it on page eighty, and it says, "From age six up, I used to kiss other guys in my neighborhood, make out with them, perform oral sex with them. I like it. I used to love oral, and I touched their you-know-whats. We were really young, but that's what we did." The story goes on to describe pedophiles masturbating. The author does not mention that these acts are illegal or harmful. In fact, the author's writing does the opposite, creating the impression that these activities should be celebrated. Unfortunately, there's many other books on that list that are like this. The images described in these adult books defiles the mind and hearts of our children. The brain is not fully developed until age twenty-five, so why would we burden our children with these very adult topics? What is the value of these books? What is your intention for making these books available to our children, and who is in charge of deciding which books go into our library? This is not okay. Thank you.
My name is Michael Wagner. I'm a longtime resident of Big Walnut. Both of my children graduated from—went through the school system. In a past meeting, a member of the board discussed how professional training provides a solid foundation for evaluating complex and difficult situations. A book was challenged, board policy was followed, and that committee was formed that included parents and professionals. All committee members read the book. The decision rendered was that the book was—has merit to remain in the classroom and in the library. Parents who disagreed with this decision may opt their children out. It appears that now, this decision is being questioned, thus removing the book for all children in the district. The board should allow the committee and the administrators to use their professional training to make such a decision. Should the board decide to overturn this committee's decision, this will go a long way to eroding already—eroding trust within the district. This lack of trust will have far-reaching unintended consequences. Trust will be compromised between the board and the teachers and administrators, who will feel the lack of respect for their knowledge. Retaining quality teachers and administrators, as well as new recruiting efforts, could also be affected. Trust will be compromised between students and the board, because students, particularly those who have already been in the district for a while, will recognize a dumbing-down of curriculum that could result if teachers are afraid to develop curriculum. Compromised curriculum could have a negative effect on their futures. Trust will be compromised between the community and this board, who obviously are beholden to a vocal minority and not to serving the good of the full community. This breach of trust could impact future budgeting for this district. I urge the board to abide by the committee's decision and demonstrate faith in the professionals that you hired.
Sorry, I just have to find my note. Hello. I am here today to explain my stance about inappropriate reading materials being assigned and accessible to students in Big Walnut schools. I do have students in the district, but as a taxpayer, that shouldn't matter. We are also one of the few families that use the book opt-out option that is being offered as the solution to parent book concerns. I want the board and community to be aware that the opt-out book assigned to our child as the replacement can— as the replacement contained violence involving child abuse, domestic violence, and sexual assault. We respectfully explained to the teacher that this was just as inappropriate as the first book. The teacher then advised us to choose a novel for our child that aligns with the standards and goals for the unit, along with a long list of requirements to be met with our book of choice. The teacher also stated, quote, "While the rest of the class works on the novel unit, your student will go to the small room attached to our classroom. He will be missing out on whole-class instruction and conversations on the theme and character development with his peers. However, we will be checking in with him often. As you know, this is not ideal situation. With 27 students in that class, the intervention specialist and I do our best to meet the needs of all students." This teacher is right. The opt-out option is not ideal, and therefore should not be the solution we use. I also want to point out that our child was separated from the class and isolated for over five weeks. I have reviewed the contents of many of the books in question, and these books are disturbing and do not align with our family's values. We realize kids are being exposed to inappropriate things in an expedited manner and that it's impossible to keep everything from sneaking in. But still, it's also imperative to recognize the cumulative effect of these inappropriate and explicit topics, which for some will leave a long-lasting negative impact. Until a better solution is created to protect our children, we ask that the district protect all children by restricting this adult content for our underage students and move the reading material out of our schools. Thank you.
Half hour is up, right?
Yes.
In order to continue, we'll have to take a vote of the board. We've got, one, two, three, eight more.
Yeah, that was 12 of 20. Ms. Pizzano is 13.
Shouldn't take an additional 30 minutes to finish. So I make a motion that we extend for an additional 25 minutes. Public participation.
I second.
Darren.
I'm with you. Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Nix.
Yes.
Mrs. Graciosi. Sophie.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Pizzano.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Sorry. It's a night of mic issues, right? Well, I just can't believe I'm here tonight, again having to defend books and question why we're wasting time, energy, and money on frivolous pursuits such as this instead of actually working on real needs that our district is facing. I'd rather be across the hall at the wrestling meet or at home playing with my brand-new puppy. But this is so important that we cannot remain silent, and we must have our voices heard. I'm going to start tonight with some definitions that are found in the Merriam-Webster dictionary. I was going to start with pornography, but our wonderful student already did that for you, so I won't bore you with that. But I'm going to talk about ban, banning, bans. It is a transitive verb in order to prohibit the use, performance, or distribution of something, AKA a book ban. Compromise, a noun. A settlement of differences by arbitration or consent reached by mutual concessions. Something that is an intermediate between or a blending of qualities from two different things. None of these books that are on this list are required reading. If a parent or student determines that it is not a book that they wish to read, they may opt out and select from multiple other choices to read instead that fits with their values. This is the compromise. We already have a process in place that meets everyone in the middle. By working with our valued and trusted teachers, we strengthen the communication that is optional, and we can inform our students better and our parents better so that they have a clear understanding that it is their choice without stripping other parents' rights and the students' rights to have access to those materials. Instead, let's focus on our staffing shortages, our building improvements, and the impact that the intel factory is going to have on our community. And as our treasurer pointed out today, the difficulties we're going to have in the next five years for financing. So please, use the words from one of you tonight, trust. It's earned, it needs to be met, it needs to be compromised, and sunshine laws apply to everyone.
Sarah, if I mispronounced your last word, I apologize.
Mudry.
Mudry, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Last year, my 12th grade son was informed by his school counselor that he needed another elective in order to graduate. The only elective that could fit in his schedule was called Tales of Whore. My son agreed to take it since there was no other option available. After the first couple weeks, my son let us know how disturbing the content was, and as a mom, I was starting to get concerned about his mental health. We signed up for a parent-teacher conference and then came to realize it was an elective called Tales of Whore. We just thought it was a course that Big Walnut suggested. I knew I needed to do something, so I got him out of the elective, and he was relieved, to say the least. He was then made fun of by his peers for leaving the class. If Big Walnut offers Tales of Whore, can they also offer other electives that show virtue or character development? I worry about our youth's mental health and feel like saying something instead of remaining silent. These kids just simply deserve better, and that's why I was here tonight. I have never been at one of these Big Walnut board meetings ever, but I wanted to come here tonight because I truly value kids' education, and I'm here tonight to just stand up for these kids because I honestly feel like they deserve better than reading Tales of Whore.
Lana Lee.
Good evening, Board. I'm here on behalf tonight of a friend who has a sick child at home and couldn't be here. She writes, "People have asked why any parent would want their child exposed to sexual material at a young age and at school. As a mom of teenage boys, I see the value of these topics discussed in a classroom because if they are teenage boys currently, the only place they are hearing about it is from their friends, social media, and their parents, which is totally lame. But hearing it from another adult in a safe place where it is open for discussion is what protects our children. I want my teenage boys to learn what being raped is like from the perspective of a teenage girl. I want them to see these discussions happen and feel comfortable asking questions and hearing from other people with entirely different perspectives because that is how we learn, and that is what I send them to school to do. People have stated that removing these books from the school is not a big deal because they are still accessible at the public library. For this, an analogy, let's say you don't want your kids to learn French. It's a personal conviction for you. You feel very strongly that learning Spanish is a much better option. In fact, in general, you think that learning Spanish is probably the best option for everyone. So should you then demand that the school remove all French classes, or should you just tell your own kid to take Spanish instead? After all, other people's kids could learn French another way if they really wanted to. They could buy books at the bookstore, get apps on their phone, go to the public library, et cetera. So you getting French removed as an option doesn't really harm anyone, as there are plenty of other ways for other people's kids to learn French if they really wanted to. And really, you are just trying to do what you think is best for all kids of this community. But I'm sure you wouldn't do that because that's ridiculous. But this is exactly the same as a small group of parents attempting to ban books in our schools because of how they themselves feel about them. I have heard these books repeatedly referred to as pornography. I'm not going to use a definition as we've heard that this evening. While these books acknowledge the existence of sex and some of them refer to certain sexual acts, it is clear that they were not written for the express purpose of causing sexual excitement. Alternately, this comes down to a lack of trust in our educators to handle these sensitive topics properly in the classroom. I found the following quote in an article, and it speaks it more clearly than I ever could, so I'll quote it here. "The attempt to expose students to challenging topics and issues, as many teachers support, is not intended to force students into a certain mode of thought. Moreover, the books are to serve as opportunities for students to think, theorize, question, and explore." I have to emphasize that last line because that's what it's all about. This is why we want these materials available for our kids. These books are to serve as opportunities for students to think, theorize, question, and explore.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Adams, and I am the parent of four kids who will progress through the district in the upcoming years. I'm concerned by recent efforts of some members of the Big Walnut School District community to spearhead a motion to remove books that are in our school libraries due to subject matter that they find offensive or inappropriate. I tried to give people the most generous interpretation when it comes to their motivations or intentions, so on a small level, I can see that they are trying to protect children, their children, from material that can be explicit, intense, and unfamiliar. However, censorship through book banning, which is removing books from any library, school, public, or otherwise, is not the right course of action for our students and their success. The American Library Association makes this clear in the following statement, which I quote. "Librarians and governing bodies," which I take to mean boards of education, "should maintain that parents, and only parents, have the right and the responsibility to restrict the access of their children, and only their children, to library resources." End of quote. This practice and procedure is already in place in Big Walnut Schools. I have the right to limit my child's access to material that I find inappropriate or offensive, but that right does not extend to denying access for anyone else's child. And that is exactly what is at stake to remove any books from the library system. Any parent who objects to materials has the choice not to allow their child to read a book and participate in classroom discussions. I currently have the choice to allow my child to read these books and have those discussions both in school and at home. Please do not remove my choice. Simply leaving the books in place, all families get to exercise their choice in the matter of their child's education. I'm responsible for my children and my children alone, and I would ask you to respect that for all families across the board. If a child doesn't respect their parents' boundaries, that should be an issue resolved in the home, not an issue resolved by a school board via a book ban. Additionally, I appreciate the learning opportunities the presence of these books offers me and my children as we discuss the choices we make and the reasons behind those choices and what we consume, even if it is offensive or if we don't agree with it, because I still value what we can learn from it. I would appreciate not having these important life-learning opportunities limited or stripped away to ease someone else's disapproval or discomfort if they aren't willing to do the same work of critical thinking, analysis, and learning alongside their students and in collaboration with our excellent Big Walnut educators. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I must completely apologize for being very ill-prepared. I have no speech to read, and I have not prepared very long as this was just brought to my attention. But I have four children who have entirely gone through the Big Walnut School District and two grandchildren. We have 21 grandchildren in all. I'm here because of the required reading for 10th grade students, and I believe that is very inappropriate and that the ends does not justify the means. And I think if we are trying to get an important point across, don't drink and drive, be careful who your friends are, any of these points, that we should use age-appropriate material. And I believe that even though I'm sure that many people don't believe this in this classroom, not everyone enjoys, wants to, or knows about all of these things and all of these books. So instead of opening discussion with some people that have had problems or been exposed to these, we are opening up more people's innocence and what they would just prefer not to know about, not to hear about, and not had in their brains. When we read explicit sexual occurrences, it stays in our brains, and it's something we think about much more than we think about the positive things. I don't feel that pornography or reading pornography develops a good community. I don't think it makes strong marriages, and I don't think we are really giving the youth of Big Walnut Schools the correct opportunity and the best that we can give them. We talk about wanting to build good communities, strong families. I don't believe that that's the best way to build that. And besides giving people an advantage, we need to build strong families. We can agree that there is much too much divorce, pornography, you know, affects all of these things, these things, for the rest of these youth's life. I've been a taxpayer here for the school system for 37 years, and my family's lived in it since 1964. I believe that we have all been taxpayers, we have all supported, and I'm sorry to say that my tax money is buying these things and that we are paying the salaries of people that support and want to promote this and feel that it's important to do. Many of us will not continue to vote for the school levies if these things are available and pursued to educate our children because it is not education. Thank you very much.
Patty Beener.
Good evening, School Board, and Ryan McLean. I wanted to begin by thanking each and every one of you for your time, your commitment to inspire and guide each student to his and her maximum potential. I grew up here in Big Walnut. I graduated in 1996. Although a lot has changed over the years, I've moved back to the community because I wanted my children to have a great education. I have three kids in the district who have been here the entire time, two being in the high school and one in the elementary. All three of my kids are very different academically, one being a typical peer, one in advanced classes, and one with learning disabilities and on an IEP. These last couple of years, I've watched, I've listened, and I've asked questions, not only of you, but of the administration, the teachers, and our community, and my own children, to try to understand and find solutions. As a mom, I've tried to provide necessary steps to problem-solve in a positive manner and to have an open dialogue, to understand a constant change of society that doesn't necessarily align with my family's moral compass or beliefs. I must admit, I recently sat quite I must admit, I recently sat quietly, or I've recently sat quietly. This past week, I went to see and observe and engage in conversation with the people in the community about the books asking to be rehomed. Ultimately, the second night that I was there was great dialogue and respect, for most part on both sides. I saw community members try to agree to disagree, but I also saw community members trying to be distractful for the work that this group was trying to do. I heard those same people twisting words on social media afterwards, trying to divide our community, even more with hate, fake profiles, and even some harassment and threats that those signed those petitions and that they would find their identities. I want to ask everyone in this room, how do we get, how did we even get here? What happened to having differences of opinions and respecting those that may not agree to you? I've asked questions like if I decide to opt my child out of a required reading requirement, and I've been met with your child will sit out either in the hallway or sit in a meeting room by administration and being checked on randomly by staff. When asking these questions on social media, trying to find resolution, I've been told I'm the problem. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Bill Shelby. I want to talk about issues that aren't being discussed. Number one, intel. I spoke to this issue at my first Board of Education meeting soon after most of you have been on this board. It's a pretty important topic for two reasons. One, it's the biggest growth industry in our state's history. Two, it's a job opportunity for our students. What have you done? I've not seen it addressed. It's not been addressed since the very first meeting. A new curriculum director could be preparing these issues on how we provide learning opportunities, also dealing with learning loss due to the pandemic. Where are we on hiring a curriculum director? What are you doing about overcrowding at the elementary schools? It takes at least five years to plan for new schools. What are the financial issues that were discussed as part of the five-year forecast? What has happened on the competition or the completion of the construction? Where were we on budget? What about shortage of bus drivers and custodial staff? What happened to transparency? Communication with Big Walnut Community, Eagle Examiner, and the podcast were great tools to communicate with the public. I understand you want your own program for communication, but not having one is a gross negligence to our community. Lastly, I want to speak to the essence of book burning. Is this part of Alice Nyx's campaign materials of dumbing down our programs? The right to, this is some quotes from Justin William Brennan in Paint a Case Law in 1965. "The right to speak and the right to publish under the First Amendment has been interpreted widely to protect individuals in society from government attempts to suppress ideas and information and to forbid government censorship of books, magazines, et cetera." It goes on. And then, in the case, he states, "The protection of the Bill of Rights goes beyond to make the express guarantees fully meaningful. I think the right to receive publications is such a fundamental right. The dissemination of ideas can accomplish nothing if otherwise willing addresses are not free to receive and consider them. It would be a barren marketplace of ideas that had only sellers and no buyers." Suppressing the First Amendment rights would be another critical error for this board. Please don't make that mistake again.
I'm a concerned parent. I am concerned that parents feel as though their rights are being taken away, yet potentially want to take my right to allow my children a diverse education. There is, there will never be a total consensus, an agreement, but this is why parents can opt out their students if they so choose. If parents feel like there has not been enough information put out there to be able to opt out, please work to make that change, not ban the books from our schools. As I've been told, opting out for Looking for Alaska has been minimal, minimal. There needs to be a level of trust towards our teachers. They have the professional knowledge to instruct our children. Teaching is not an easy profession, nor do teachers take their responsibility lightly to educating our students. Our teachers are vetted and hired for what they can do to challenge and inspire our students. Teachers have taken the time to vet books, write thoughtful, challenging lesson plans that follow curriculum standards or learning standards set by the state, and guide students to objective and analytical and sometimes emotional dialogue and discussions in a safe learning environment. Asking questions, sometimes more difficult than others, is what teachers encourage our students to do on a daily basis to set them up for success as adults, future voters, and hopefully lifelong learners, not necessarily to follow blindly in any situation. We do our students a disservice if we do not challenge them, if we do not challenge them to find their own path with the knowledge they have at hand. Parents help to set the values and morals of their children. Teachers guide and prepare students with the ability to analyze content and new ideas with the intent to prepare students for success after graduation. And students can decide their view based on what they learn at home and at school. As a history teacher, I've seen many primary and secondary sources in my studies of what getting rid of books and limiting the ability to have diverse thinking and difficult dialogue can do to a people or country. Sadly, a majority of these examples are from within the last hundred years, yet they are still repeating. Both of my children have greatly enjoyed a majority of the books they've read in their English classes. Nobody likes all of the books, but they enjoyed most of them, and they continue to make them think. Please stop eroding teachers' trust and let them continue to do their jobs. Do not take away their creativity and diversity, as I do not want our fantastic teachers to leave. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful holiday season.
Mr. Crowell, that concludes our public participation.
That'll take us to item 14, business items. 14.1, it is recommended the board appoint someone as president pro temp for the January 12, 2023 organizational board meeting. Yes.
I would like to nominate Doug Crowell as president pro temp for January 12, 2023 organizational board meeting. I second that.
Darren, do we have to take a vote on that?
You have a nomination and a second, so yeah.
When you're ready.
Okay. Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
I'll abstain. 14.2, it is recommended the board approve the amended appropriations for the FY 2023 to be submitted to the county auditor's office.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yep.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
14.3, it is recommended the board approve the attached then and nows.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
The only thing I will say is, just to repeat what I said before, we're working on processes so that this doesn't happen. It's something that should not happen, quite candidly. I will tell you that if you looked at the materials that were included in your packet, some of them were over a year old, and the issue became the fact that we closed a purchase order conclusion of a fiscal year, and then we were invoiced into another fiscal year. The issue is with the vendor, and we're working to make sure that this kind of stuff doesn't happen. Although, candidly, since I've been here, it's happened too many times, in my opinion. I don't quite understand why a vendor would not submit an invoice for payment in a timely manner, but you would be surprised, the number of occasions that that does in fact occur.
They're making too much money. When you have some time, I'd like to sit down with you on that topic.
Okay.
I would like to thank Darren for his information. I did call today and had a long conversation with him after I discovered the dates on that invoice, and he was very helpful, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yep.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
Takes us to 14.4. It is recommended the board approve the purchase and subscription services agreement between Raptor Technologies LLC and Big Walnut Local School District.
So moved. Second.
Ryan, this got your name on it. The only question I have on it is, and I know we've covered this, but what's the subscription amount? I know there's an upfront, which is, if you don't have it, give it to me later.
Yeah, I'll have to give it to you later, I would be guessing. After the first year after the equipment, it's a little over 19,000 a year?
Okay. When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh? Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
Takes us to 14.5. It is recommended the board approve the contract, software license, and hosting agreement between TransFinder and Big Walnut Local School District.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, discussion? When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
Takes us to 14.6. It is recommended the board approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Sunbury and Ohio Municipal Corporation and the Board of Education for the Big Walnut Local School District.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyx?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
Takes us to 14.7. It is recommended the board review the challenge appeal on Looking for Alaska. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Well, I guess.
Or do we need to have a discussion first?
Yeah, you probably, we have a motion and a second for the board to review the challenge appeal, and all that says is that you're going to review it. It doesn't say that you're going to take any action, yea or nay, to uphold.
Not a vote on it, but we are taking action by discussing.
Right.
Right, so we take the vote to...
Any questions? No kidding.
What's part of the policy?
There's got to be one or two. The policy's pretty short. It's come from the committee, and I believe we're at stage M. The complaint, the complainant may appeal this decision within 30 business days to the board through a written request to the superintendent, who shall forward the request and all written material relating to the matter to the board. Under N, the board shall review the case and advise the complainant in writing of its decision within 30 business days. No challenge material may be removed from the curriculum or from a collection of resource materials except by the action of the board, and no challenged material may be removed solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some. Any board action to remove material will be accompanied by the board's statement of its reasons for removal. How many board members have read the book?
I've read parts of the book.
Yeah. Read the whole book.
You've got the whole book read?
Yeah.
We will not be taking any vote or action for the removal of the book until the balance of the board has either read or substantially read the book. I also have reviewed parts. I think it would be inappropriate to cast any kind of vote if you don't know what you're voting about. I would further state that I understand there's more in the pipeline, so we may be looking at a method of the board handling it differently than what the policy currently is. We will have discussions with our second meeting with Neola on that topic and point. Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
So, just to be clear, we want the minutes to reflect that this agenda item has been tabled. Is that correct?
No.
I don't believe it's been tabled. It's under review.
Okay.
I myself, and I won't speak for the other members, since this is the last scheduled meeting of the year, and although I could run right home and read the book, so I would be ready tomorrow to answer the question, I think either we will end up having to have a work session or to be the first session of next year.
No, I'm not taking exception to anything. I just want to make sure that I reflect the minutes accurately, so...
This motion is just to vote on whether or not we will accept the challenge.
Right.
For the review?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, if you're going to take a vote, yes, that's what the vote would be.
Okay. I just, I just needed some clarification. So we want to proceed with a vote. So we want to proceed with a vote incorrectly, because we have a motion and a second.
Yes, I think it needs to be reflected in the record.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Sophie?
No.
And I will take a moment to address, prior to moving on to fourteen point eight, there has been some social media question as to why this board would have that authority to review this. And simply, it's under Ohio Revised Code 3313.21, which states that the Board of Education of each school district shall be the sole authority in determining and selecting all of the following to be used in the schools under its control: textbooks pursuant to Section 3329.08 of the Revised Code, and reading lists; number two instructional materials, and number three academic curriculum. Moving on, fourteen point eight. It is recommended the board approve the following donations. One thousand dollars donated to SOU Souders, donated by Serenity Fairway Foundation, going to Souders Student Council Fund Number 200-9614. Two hundred and fifty dollars donated to Big Wana High School Eagle Connections, donated by the Big Wana Local School District Athletic Boosters Golf. Big Wana Connections Fund 200-9614. Five hundred dollars donated to Big Wana High School, donated by Sunbury Lions Club, going to fund Eagle Strong Fund 300-9001. Two hundred and fifty dollars donated to Big Wana Eagle Connections, donated by Arrow Industry Supply, going to the Big Wana Eagle Connections Fund 200-9901. Hundred dollars donated to the Big Wana Local School District Food Service Anonymous donor, going to the Big Wana Local School District Food Service Fund Number 006-0000. One thousand dollars donated to BWI Robotics, going to the Big Wana Intermediate School Robotics Fund Number 300-9230, and two hundred dollars donated by each of the following: J Rule, Trillium Farm Holdings, K Gilbert Family, Jamison and Associates, and Acoustic Ceiling and Partition. Does not state what fund that's going to. General?
Honestly, it's going to have to, it will determine, it will be determined by the gift. Some of them will go into a principal's fund, some of them will go into the fund for that specific activity.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Item fifteen, human resources. All HR items are pending receipt of successful background checks, verification of experience, and completion of all necessary documentation. It is recommended the board approve the following resignations. Kathryn Penrod, bus aide effective December 4, '22, pending employment as a bus driver. Nicole Kelly, Big Wana High School Teaching Assistant, effective December 2 of '22. Charlie Smith, Big Wana High School Science Teacher and Point Five Athletic Facilities Manager, at the end of the day on December 21, '22.
Submit. Second.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Fifteen point two, it is recommended the board approve the ninety-day contract for the following classified staff. Kathryn Penrod, full-time bus driver, step zero, effective December 5, '22. Luke Luthai, Big Wana Middle School Second Shift Custodian, step two, effective December 5, '22. And Wendell Piper, full-time district substitute custodian, step five, effective December 19, '22.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Fifteen point three, it is recommended the board approve a one-year contract for the '22-'23 school year for the following classified staff. Lindsay Koontz, Teaching Assistant, Bus Aide, Step Zero, effective December 8, '22. Laura Morgan, Big Wana Intermediate School Teaching Assistant, Step Seven, effective December 5, '22.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Fifteen point four. It is recommended the board approve a classified contract for the balance of the '22-'23 school year for Holly Longshore, Bus Driver.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Fifteen point five, it is recommended the board approve the rescinding, the contract for Melinda Miller, BWI Teaching Assistant, Step Zero.
So moved. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a, Mr. McLean or Mr. President, could you just explain the rescinding or what that was all about?
This was a employee that we approved last month, and that was an ad, and it turned out that that person decided not to work at the intermediate building, so we're rescinding that contract and the one that you approved in fifteen-three. Laura Morgan is the person that's going to fill that spot. So we're not, that was the reason for the rescinding. Nothing improper.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Item sixteen, scheduling the next board meeting. The organizational meeting is slated for January the 12th of '23 at 6:00 p.m. at the district office, followed by the regular scheduled meeting on January the 12th at 6:30. I have a question on that myself. Twelve days into January is a long time.
Well.
Can we?
Ohio Revised Code says it has to be done by January 15th.
Correct.
That's just the corresponding date. I mean, there's no mystery there. It's just what it.
Well, here's the problem, as I see it, okay? That means from the 31st of December, we can't have any meetings until after the organizational.
Yeah.
And we just, that's going to, that leaves twelve days there that we can't act on this if we've wanted to set up a work session on it.
And, Mr. Crowe, I, you know, we put that date on.
Can we change this date after tonight?
Well, you can't, after tonight?
Yeah, after I read this into the record.
Yeah.
That would take a special meeting.
Well, right, you have to have a special meeting before the end of the year, or we'll have to set an alternative date for your organizational meeting after January 1st. And it's up to the pleasure of the board, what they want to do.
Yes.
I know, I will not be, I will be not here, will not be here. So I don't know if it's polling who is going to be around.
You won't be here?
Well, I'll be here for, I could be here for the January 12th meeting, but I'll be out of town from the 4th to 12th, or excuse me.
I'll leave it on the 12th, I guess.
4th to 11th.
Item seventeen. Seventeen-one, it is recommended the board enter executive session to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocol for the Board of Education to consider the employment of a public employee or official, and to consider the sale of property at competitive bid.
So moved. Second.
Ready? Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciocci?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
I don't believe the board will be coming back into session to make any, take any action on any items. The board will take a ten-minute recess, whereas our executive offices.